Okay, I would like to welcome everybody to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of October 10. And I'd like to strike by standing and doing the legislation, please. My diligence was by the United States of America and to the Republic which has one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And if you don't mind, I would just like to take few seconds for quiet for Israel. Thank you. That's great. Okay, so the first item from our agenda, since the public hearing continued, Tim Draper, A30G affordable housing for units 42 Nashville Road.
Madam Chairman, I'm recusing myself from the application.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, if I may, Neil Marcus Cole will be CEO behalf of the applicant.
Neil, I just gotta cut you off real quick. I just gotta say that I'm recusing myself.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, I'm wondering, is Steve Trinkus, are you on the phone?
Uh, yes, I am, Neil.
Okay, good. Uh, so Steve was unable to live, because he's got an obligation up in Oxford, but he has sent a letter on October 8th to Kent Stevens of with uh, the uh, some modifications to the plan, all of which emanated from our discussion with the commission uh, at the last session of the public area on 9/26. And it mostly in response to Todd Ritchie's plans. So rather than take too much time, Steve, can you pick up there and tell the commission and the public what changes you made?
Yes, I can. Uh, first, Steve Trinkus, a professional engineer representing Tim Draper, the applicant. Um, the changes that we made, um, uh, I think it was his request, how much rock we're going to remove at the two corners, the back two corners of the building which go into the existing uh, rock area. On the northeast corner, uh, 75 cubic yards of rock will be removed. On the southeast corner, uh, 65 yards, so roughly 140 yards in total. That's noted on the site plan. Um, and taking Todd's comments to heart, what we did is we modified the grading behind uh, the building to be below the first floor elevation, um, the first, I guess, usable area, which is really the second floor because the garage is at grade. So instead of being up higher to the second floor level, we're uh, dropping it down, pitching it into the base of the existing ledge cut, and then in the approximate center of the building, but at the base of the ledge, we'll put in a yard drain there and we'll pitch the water uh, from this filled area to the yard drain, which will be connected to the roof drain, which then goes out to the gallery system. Um, I increased by two call tech units, the, the stormwater system uh, to still maintain uh, the zero increase in peak rate of runoff. Um, and that's reflected in the stormwater report. Uh, we also put spot elevations on the grade uh, right behind the building on the eastern side that was requested. Um, we did go out in the field and look at where the drainage pipe that goes currently under Nashville Road goes across to the wet side, uh, to the west, west side, excuse me. And there is a water course there, so we showed the water course. We showed 100 foot upwind review area. Um, I also submitted via a second email uh, to David, a wetlands application. Um, I'm just waiting to hear what the fee would be and I'll be happy to get uh, David the check and if he needs printed copies of that application. Um, and that, and obviously by cutting the grade down and back, we adjusted the uh, the elevations of the uh, stone steps that will be running along the southern side of the building to get fire access up behind the building. Uh, we also showed a chain link fence along the south side of the building. Um, uh, just in the area at the top of the uh, top of the ledge cut on the south side, and that really is the, the changes. We also did put dimensions from the Bilko door to the building uh, just for informational purposes. Um, so that really constitutes the changes that I made to the plans.
Thank you very much.
Steve, could you just, uh, do you know the dimension they put in for the Bilko door?
It's, I think between one and a half and two feet, I put dimensions to both corners.
Okay.
I think one and a half is the closest point.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, the prints is really tight, but.
The prints are hard.
Yeah, but I see, I see one, one five and, and 2.3.
Yeah, that, that sounds about right.
I think that's it, yeah.
There's also what, in the package of materials that was submitted, there's actually a, a photograph showing the Bilko door up against the existing home. Give you an idea, but uh, it's tight there, but people can go in and out and that's all that really matters. Uh, does it, it does not get a lot of use anyway. Does it, no, it, it, the basement?
No. Is there another entrance from the house? Because I have the same thing with my head.
It doesn't get a lot of use. Uh, so those, thank you, Steve, the uh, those are the changes that we've made. At this point, we don't have a lot more to add unless there are other questions, uh, so.
Mr. Draper, would you have something you want to add?
No. We're good.
Okay, so then, um, can we go to Todd Ritchie? Todd, are you there?
Yes, good evening. For record, Todd Ritchie, professional engineer with SLR. Um, I did receive and review the revised materials prior to the meeting. Um, seems like the changes are appropriate and improved over um, some of the issues that were raised at the last meeting. Um, I think I really only have two final comments that could probably be addressed by, if the commission sees fit, uh, conditions of approval. Um, one is, it, it appears that the, the building itself could probably shift a little bit more to the south. Uh, probably right up against the staircase to give a couple more feet, or maybe a foot and a half to two feet near that, that uh, existing basement entry. So maybe some consideration to that, this edge of stairs right up against the building will may actually work out to be more easily constructable. Um, so there's some thought about that because you know, there isn't a lot of space between the building and the, and the basement entry. I don't know if there's, you know, equipment down there, if there's a water heater or anything that will ever have to come out of there. Um, so you certainly want to think about those types of things that if there's any maintenance or repairs that have to be done in the basement in the future of the existing house. Um, I guess the other thing would be just, um, there will be, need to be a, a foundation drain discharge somewhere because the soil will infiltrate water on the backside of the building. Certainly it will need to be picked up, um, somewhere, you know, under the architectural design of the footings or the foundation. So that they'll just, that will just need to be handled, connect if, you know, based on elevations connected to the stormwater system or what have you, should just not discharge in front of, you know, onto the pavement in front of doorways where it can create an icing situation. Um, that's, so that's, I think that's my final comments on the, the plans, uh, review of the latest plans, and then I just, a couple issues from last time, and again, these are up to the commission to make a determination whether these can be requested or uh, net, uh, as part of this open application or as a part of an approval. Um, to sign and seal copies of the revised site plans, um, on file at the town. Um, and sign, seal copies of the existing condition survey plan. And also, um, last time I had mentioned providing documentation on how many existing uh, legal living units are in the existing building that's to remain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. We're good, yeah, I mean, uh, it's to the extent that there are need to be any additions dealing with any issues of the public health or safety, you know, obviously we can take a look at them.
Excellent. Okay, was it, was it David?
Yes, I'm here, Madam Chairman, thank you. Yes, I, I, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep them brief, um, as, as there's, as most of what I would have for you guys is, is just housekeeping. Um, first off, I, I had some catching up to do with this application. Um, seeing as how, uh, this is the first evening I'm speaking to you guys and giving you comments about it directly. Um, you guys thus far have been very thorough with your questions to, um, the applicant, just as an item in case you have been tracking it. Uh, we did receive uh, comments from the fire marshal, their date is September 25th, so if you were going to ask that to the applicant, that item has been addressed. Those uh, comments were put in the Google Drive for tonight's meeting. He didn't have any outstanding items uh, for you guys to consider. Um, as uh, just as a timing and logistics item, uh, your period of, uh, your public hearing period that is granted to you um, by statute ends tonight. Uh, so I think it's, it's worth you all giving thanks to, uh, Todd Ritchie for being so quick uh, with having his comments for you guys tonight as, um, the revisions, uh, from Mr. Trinkus, uh, just came to us on Sunday, so that was a quick turnaround on, um, his part. One item that I, uh, would just note that you guys had asked about at the last meeting, and I don't know, um, if Mr. Trinkus can address this over the phone. I, I, if I'm recalling correctly, the commission had asked what the excavation and fill volumes are for the material that has already been removed from the site. I, I tried to look at the site plans, the, the most recent revision and could not find that number myself. Ultimately, it, it, it very well could be a moot point as, uh, if I'm recalling, Mr. Ritchie, uh, said that that volume is likely beneath 500 or 1,000 cubic yards anyway, so there wouldn't be a, a prompt for you guys to need any special approvals for that. Um, the last item that is of note is yes, an application has been submitted for acceptance to the In the Wetlands Commission. Assuming that everything is complete for that application, they will accept it, or they likely will accept it at their next regular meeting on October 23rd. Uh, Steve, I apologize for not getting those uh, numbers to you. Uh, I, I will do that uh, tomorrow or as soon as I can. I was just trying to prep uh, for tonight's meeting, but I, I do intend to get those numbers to you. Um, and by no means that, that should be a holdup for you guys, planning is only commissioned, that is. Um, that, that's something that, that can be taken care of in-house. Um, i- if, if you uh, have no additional questions or if there's no additional material that's raised, um, by members of the public or you guys tonight. Um, you may want to consider closing this public hearing, um, but I would leave that amongst you guys to um, discuss if that's appropriate at this time, and I have no additional comments. Feel free to ask me any questions.
I appreciate it. Any further comments right here, Mr. Marcus?
We're good, we're good.
Good, okay, so I guess we're going out to the public now. Public comments, would anyone like to come forward and speak on this application? You see anyone online or there?
Uh, I'm not seeing any hands, oh, I am seeing one hand raised. It's Paula Antelini, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Antelini, you'd like to speak, please?
Good evening, Commission. Um, Paula Antelini. 216 Good Hill Road, Weston, Connecticut, 20-year Bethel resident. Um, I just want to make sure we're on the 42 Nashville Road, uh, project. I, I came in late. Okay, there were a couple of comments made at the last meeting. I, I think you made them, Kitty, Kitty, and I, I, I need something clarified because I've been to many of these meetings and I see you asking about certain things very much, but yet at other projects uh, from other builders, the same questions are never asked. And, um, so I, I know you like green space, and that was one thing that was brought up at Mr. Draper's project, but it was not brought up at a very, uh, different kind of project. At another meeting, which was on a very steep hill, I know you don't like to mention other projects, but green space wasn't mentioned, extra parking spaces wasn't mentioned. I think you mentioned last time that um, in case the renters have teenage children that also have cars, you're asking where those spaces are. So I'd like to know where you and the board stand on that general aspect. Maybe just those two questions alone, but there are other questions, I just won't bring them all up tonight, that if you're going to ask them, I feel it's only fair to ask them every builder, no matter what the project is. And I hear you speaking about, uh, soil tonight. The soil wasn't ever talked about at a past meeting that was on South Street. I won't mention particular projects, but I'm just noticing that the questions aren't consistent. And, uh, so I don't know if you're aware of that, but I'd like to make you aware of it. Thank you so much.
I, I think our, I, I guess I could comment right now. Applications are all different, Ms. Antelini. And this application to ask for green space when it was very obvious if there was no green space would be absolutely impossible. She asked for extra parking spaces when there couldn't possibly be any extra parking spaces. Would be impossible. So I don't ask for the impossible. I ask for things that I.
Project. I'm sorry?
Want to say something?
Back and forth conversation.
What project are you saying?
No, Paula, it's not my turn. I'm sorry, I should not have done that. Please forgive me, it's not my turn. Uh, I, I can answer after I'm done. This, this, the, the comments here now were for the, for the people, this, the, the, uh, for the, uh, I'm sorry, for the applicant or from the specialist about this project. Do you have any questions? As, as it applies to that right now.
Okay, one more thing. I know every project is different, but I guess what I'm talking about.
We're talking about this project.
Right, and I'm, what I'm talking about is projects in general that have very tight space for the building and the parking and possible green space. I'd like to know why it's only asked sometimes and not other times, and I'd like to ask what the parameters are about asking about soil. Because, uh, I know that's steep slope building of any sort, and we've had several projects that involve that involve certain questions about soil or.
What I would like you to address is the application before us right now.
I am.
The only thing we can address right now.
All right, I'm asking why you ask about green space on this particular project when it's very similar to other projects that didn't have those questions. It, it, I need an explanation on that, just to understand it. You know, I'm not a commissioner, so I'm trying to understand what the rules are for what questions you ask. You said every, every project is different, and I get that. But to me, tight projects on a tight property, and a lot of these things are being built on like one acre. Uh, some questions get asked and some don't. Thank you so much.
Do you have any, anything to ask the, the, the experts here about this project now? Not, not the commission member, but the experts who are here who can answer your questions.
Uh, no, I just had a question for the commission tonight, thanks.
Okay, well then, our turn will be later, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Do anyone else who'd like to ask a question in the public?
I'm not seeing, yeah, I'm not seeing any hands raised online, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Davis. Okay, um, Mr. Wallace, would you have any questions?
Um, I do not.
Okay. Linda Curtis.
No questions.
Penny.
No questions.
And I have no questions.
Don't forget Bob, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Mr. Lagnard.
Just, uh, just so I, I, I understand what Steve Trinker said, uh, about the, uh, some sort of a safety fence, uh, to prevent someone from falling off the, where the cut is there.
Right.
Is that true? It, it's gonna start at the stairway and go up wherever there is a difference in slope?
Yeah, it, uh, Steve Trinkus again, yeah, it starts approximately opposite the, um, you know, front corner of the building on the south side. Runs the length of the south side, um, you know, up to, um, you know, up, up the slope on our side of the stone wall that's there. And that's where it, there's a sharp cut there, and that's where, uh, the fence is being proposed.
Okay, that's it, that's, that's all I have. I just wanted to make sure that I understood you because it doesn't through that clear when, when you're on the phone.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay, I actually do have a question. Um, Todd, if you could just go back because you mentioned, um, three areas of signed and sealed copies that you would like to see made available, could you just run those past again, please?
Oh, one second, sorry, let me bring up my, uh, note here.
I think there was something about the.
I think, yeah, I think it was, um, it wasn't necessarily three, it was, I guess, minimum of three copies of, uh, you know, signed and sealed plans and also, uh, signed and sealed, uh, survey plans. And that's just kind of like, that's what you require, so, um, you know, as things get revised and such, we, we certainly submit things digitally and such, and which doesn't hold things up, but, uh, you know, for the record, it should, you know, all doc, all final, you know, revised for final documents should be signed and sealed by the, uh, professionals who prepare them.
The plans and the surveys.
Right, Todd, there was, there was a third thing. I thought you.
Oh, yeah, there was doc, doc, I think it was documentation on the, um, number of existing bill, uh, living units in the existing house.
Oh, that's right.
Um, I think last time we discussed it, apparently according to the accessories records, there's only one existing living unit there. Um, according to the records, uh, so, uh, you would need to, you know, I, I guess you would, you would approve the two uh, additional units in that, in that building, and along with the, the plans that would be required to make them two units.
One.
Thanks, Todd. So I guess that would be my question. I'm assuming that all that information would be.
With due respect to Todd's comment, uh, he's, he's absolutely correct. You know, in the old days, we didn't submit anything digitally, everything was paper and.
Oh, that's not.
So nowadays, we were in such a rush to get out the digital ones, it was, we had no time to catch up. He's absolutely correct. If complete the file, we're gonna need to sign and seal. I have, I have no objection to that. Um, and, uh, on the existing structure, there were two units in there now, but the approval that we're asking for is a creation of the five units, three and two. So essentially, to the extent that the two, the origin of the second unit in the original house is unknown as to when that occurred, it really becomes somewhat moot if the process that we're following here is finished. I mean, we basically, we, we, we correct any error.
Interesting. Thank you.
I appreciate that, too.
Anyone else? Hearing none. I, I declare this hearing closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have.
We're done.
Our next item. Have a good night. Your ticket would be a public hearing on Hub Shopping Center Site Plan Special Permit 279 to 93 Greenwood Avenue. Do we have the, um, legal notice? Public notice? Not legal notice, public notice. Legal public notice.
Kitty, receipt, Paul Shelly.
Oh, thank you. Paul Shelly, you are now seated.
I'm back, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mind me now, please. To appear October 3rd and October 6th for 83 public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on October 10, 2023 in Conference Room D of the, of the Municipal Center, 1 School Street, Bethel, Connecticut at 7:00 PM to hear the following. 289 Greenwood Avenue, Urstadt Biddle for a site plan and special permit. The application includes two proposed building pads, a parking reduction, and changes in entrance and exits. The property can be found in the accessories records as map 14 block 08 and lot 21. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethel.cv.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Ken Stevens, Chairman.
Kitty, I read my.
That's what I'm saying. The best is going to read her.
Um, just. Just for the record, I just want to note that we do have certification and notification of property owners within 100 feet from the applicant.
Yeah.
Um, my memo is dated 10/5/23, um, and there's two aspects of it. One is first dealing with the site plan. The application presented for the commission's review is an amendment to an existing site plan consisting of reconfiguration of entrance and exit driveways along the two additional building paths, approximately 2250 and 2225 square feet. Staff has been working with the property owner over the last four years and a variety of upgrades to the property, landscaping facade and new tenants. Over the last year, meetings have been held to improve refuse location and organization away from the existing adjacent residential zone. A landscaping plan, adding interior walkways, plantings, along with adequate screening adjacent to the residential zone is also included with the, in the application. The applicant was required to assist the town reviewing the proposed circulation and driveway changes to the project by hiring or consulting traffic engineer, Artistian Hanover. After a series of meetings over the last 10 months, the applicant is proceeding with the plan before the commission. The Department of Transportation for the state of Connecticut was also included due to Greenwood Avenue being a state road, the grassy plain, both state roads. Staff requested that points of entrance and exits and locations of pads be located in the field to help the commission with the visual representation of the proposed changes, which is noted by pins with pink thirbins within the parking lot area. Um, then I get into the sections and copy the section for the special permit regarding the application. And in conclusion, it is recommended that the commission hear the overall presentation from the applicant this evening and take testimony from the general public. Staff would recommend that the hearing be continued to September. If wish.
Do-over.
Uh, to our 10/26 meeting, 7:00 PM, to review technical information from the applicant's traffic engineer, our consulting traffic engineer, and the town of Bethel's director of public works, Eric Swenson, P.E., a former traffic engineer. So in other words, what I'm saying is, let's do an overview of the whole um, site this evening, uh, the way your agenda is going now, we can open your next public hearing in, um, the end of October and deal with the technical aspects as, as far as the driveway locations and entrance exits. And also, uh, one thing I forgot to mention here, you may, you always have the option of doing a formal site walk together as a group, now that we're in the public hearing process, so keep that in mind, too, if that would be a help to you. On that, I turn it over to Attorney Mizuko.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Ward Mizuko, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant tonight. Um, as you know, the property is, uh, well-known in Bethel. It's a, a corner of Greenwood Avenue, grassy plain street right across from the Sycamore. Um, as Beth indicated, I've provided, uh, proof of legal notice to all the required members. The property consists of about four acres. Uh, it's in your commercial zone. The main building, uh, believe it or not, dates back to 1967 according to the subterfuge records here. And, uh, as you can imagine, a lot has changed in retail since 1967. And uh as you can imagine, a lot has changed in retail since nineteen sixty-seven. Uh back then, you couldn't order anything online, and you could, Federal Express wasn't here to deliver it. And the shopping malls were not as plentiful as they are today, you didn't have the gambling mall, you didn't have the Stanford mall. And uh so you had to drive to a brick and mortar establishment every time you wanted to make a purchase or make a bank transaction. Uh most people took most of their meals at home, um but now, of course, things have changed in retail and retailers. Face stiff competition from online retailers and a lot of financial transactions are also done online. So today, consumers need a good reason to go to brick and mortar shopping centers like uh the Hub Shopping Center. And those reasons include going to an attractive facility, uh a shape, safe shopping environment with convenient access and often with food. Because people eat more on the go as they're out and about. So it wasn't too many years ago where there was a kind of a challenging environment in downtown Bethel, a lot of vacancies and a lot of turnover in tenants. But thanks to the great efforts of Beth and this commission and the whole land use team, uh downtown Beth- Bethel is now much more attractive and vibrant and stable than ever before. There's a lot of stores and markets and restaurants, and this combination creates even more pressure on a relatively isolated shopping center like the Hub Center. To stay competitive in order to attract tenants and not go into decline, it has to keep up with the good things that have happened through downtown Bethel. But my client's already begun that process, as Beth explained, they're rotating facade improvements uh and so forth. And uh recognizing that one thing that everybody has to do is eat, uh shopping center owners around the country have realized that. The most stable and desirable permits often have to do with somehow with food. And as you know, there's a new uh food market in the Hub Shopping Center. Um my client, the owner here, is part of an organization that has four hundred and fifty shopping centers around the country. With all that experience, they found that sixty-five percent of all new leases, retail leases these days are for are food related. Sixty-five percent. And. That is a considerable change from the retail environment a few decades back. And businesses that sell food typically favor drive-throughs where um there's more convenient customer access, more prominent visibility. And uh the the facilities are often located on pads in the middle of a parking area. Uh to have that prominence and access uh available. And you can, you don't have to look too far to see examples of that. Up in Danbury, Chipotle left the mall and is building a standalone facility on the corner of Back Seven and Slidahowell Road. And the mall itself developed two pads within the last few years for Shake Shack and Slomp One Steakhouse. Now, those are much bigger facilities than what we're proposing here, but they're examples of where the food business is going, what food tenants want, and what customers want. Because if customers didn't want it, the the businesses wouldn't do it. And that, of course, um when COVID hit in twenty twenty, the importance of of uh. Standalone and drive-through food establishments became uh even more prominent. Because that was the only new safe way you could have a meal, to drive up, take it at arm's length and and move on. And customers got used to all that convenience, and they're not, that demand for drive-up facility, traffic facilities is not going away. So we'll talk a little bit in a little more, in a moment, we'll talk in a little more detail about the site plan. But uh one question you may have is what specific uses will go on these pads? And the answer is, we don't know. Uh no tenant is going to express serious interest, much less commit, until they know that the location's been approved. And we're actively looking for such tenants, but until such time as this commission may see fit to approve these pads. Um we won't be able to deliver that. That that site. Um and of course, we are mindful of your regulations, you know, we're not proposing, we're not going to be proposing fast food. We recognize that's prohibited in the zone. Uh but something related to food, coffee, banking, anytime, anything that's allowable under your regulations. Could be proposed, and when we get a tenant or tenants down the road, we'll come back here to. Go over the details with you and seek your approval for those specific uses. So at this point, we're really just looking for the approvals necessary to create the plans, and again, we'll get into that uh in just a moment. And if the commission, if the commission does seem fit to allow these pads uh and the. Improved accessways, that will make the overall shopping center much more valuable, which of course benefits Bethel tax rules. So the mindful of Beth's uh comments to limit ourselves to kind of a general overview of the site plan. Um I've not got our whole project in here to answer any questions that the commission may have had. But most notably, Rob Aiello, our project engineer, will take you uh through the site plan, will put off. Traffic issues until next time, as you recommend. And uh also, in the meantime, we're going to try to get our traffic team and your traffic folks together. So that they can try to harmonize their views and we can come back to you with a more coherent uh recommendation uh or endorsement uh of the site. Unless you have questions for me, I'll turn it over to Rob and he can uh know us all about the site.
Okay. Hey, that's my turn, good evening, everybody. Uh Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Rob Aiello, the licensed professional engineer with the firm of J M C in Armonk, New York. Uh we're here on behalf of the of the applicant. Mark, if you wouldn't mind, please sharing the existing conditions, please. Yeah, just the assessment without. Okay, so um just to orient everyone on the uh on the on the board that we're looking at here uh at the moment. Uh this is an aerial photograph showing the Hub Shopping Centers. Uh yeah, with Greenwood Avenue along the bottom, and then it turns into Diamond Avenue to the bottom right. And Grassy Plain Street uh on the left of the Hub Shopping Center. So the site is meant is located within the C-zone, uh the commercial zone. And we do have some residential zones adjacent to us on the east side of the site. Um and also to our northeast. But it's also a C-zone opposite Grassy Plain Street, opposite Greenwood Avenue, and along Grassy Plain Street going up to Whitney Road. So there's basically residential to the uh upper right and right and commercial uh elsewhere. Uh. Okay, so as Ward mentioned, the the property is approximately four acres in size. And consists of a single building uh that is about thirty-one thousand square feet uh in gross floor area. And that traditionally has had a mix of banking uses, retail uses, restaurant uses, grocery stores. Or you know, this is your shopping center, everyone knows the hub. Uh and there are currently one hundred and ninety-four existing parking spaces at the site now, one ninety-four. So, you know, in looking at this aerial photograph, we just thought it would be easiest to get context in terms of being able to see. Uh you know, what we're explaining here, right now, it's really just an open parking lot. The only traffic controls are really striped, you know, striped traffic controls within the existing parking lot, which means you can basically drive wherever you want. So uh you know, and as we kind of look at the proposed plan. Uh later, you'll see that there are some major differences in terms of the way that chi- traffic and pedestrians are. Directed and channelized and controlled through the site. So our our site plan will look to alleviate some of that existing condition where you can basically just drive in and kind of go wherever you want. And what happens is people just go different ways, and sometimes it could be, it could be dangerous in terms of, you know, just not expecting a car to pop up from a certain direction. So the site is uh where is accessed by two driveways, uh one, which is site driveway A in our traffic study that we provided, which is opposite Grassy Plain Street. Uh and that is uh has one lane for entering vehicles and a wide lane for exiting. And it's a full access uh driveway, which means the vehicles may get left or right into or out of the shopping center at that location. The second is uh site driveway D, as referenced in our traffic study, which is located and comes out to Diamond Street. So Mark, if you could just kind of point that out over there, thank you. Um that is also one lane, have a single lane for exiting, it's also full access like driveway A is. So when looking at proposed conditions, and Mark, if you could do the split screen. Maybe zoom out a little bit so we can see. Kind of. And with existing toothpaste. Okay. Um. It's too bad that one goes there. No, no, no.
Okay. Just minimize the window.
Oh, there you go. Perfect, thank you. So we we thought it'd be helpful to have a side-by-side comparison of the existing site on the right and the proposed site plan on the left. So in terms of just going along the themes of site access, uh the site driveway A, which is opposite uh. Grassy Plains Terrace is being shifted slightly to the north. Um and when we started planning the center, we recognized that there were limited options for access, given the configuration of the adjacent roadways. Uh the alignment with Diamond Avenue and Greenwood Avenue with the uh area, you know, the green space in between. And then also the proximity of two existing traffic lights at the intersection north of our site and the intersection south of our site. That we we had direct communications with the D O T to try to get them involved in the access, so we can explain that we're doing what we're doing. And what what shook out of that conversation was that we really had to find the right balance in terms of where that driveway could be, based on the queuing. That would occur at either driveway north and south of the site, so we're trying to find the location of the driveway, which wouldn't interfere with the queuing. That currently happens at those two traffic lights, so that's really how that area was defined. Now, the existing, so this will be a full uh, this will be a full access driveway. Uh you can make lefts in and outs, rights in and out of the center in proposed conditions. And uh yeah, we we've, we're, right now, there's a a wide exit lane that the D O T wanted us to skinny down. So that's why we made it more narrow, because at an unsignaled intersection, they didn't want to have. Two cars there waiting because one might want to view the other. Trying not to get into too much traffic, but mostly trying to get proper context, you know, for how how the design came to be, so that's really how site driveway A came to be. Now, in terms of site driveway B, we've eliminated it in the proposed plan, so the driveway that comes out the Diamond Avenue has been removed. And replaced with a new driveway on Greenwood Avenue closer to the intersection. Uh based on conversations with um the D O T, uh we've made this a right-in, right-out-only driveway, given its proximity. Its close proximity to the intersection of Grassy Plain Street. So the building is located where it is on the right-hand side in the little notch, the former movie theater parking lot. Uh it's it's located in that little notch, and that is because of a lease restriction on the property. In terms of where buildings can and cannot be. So we're not permitted to build a building in the rectangular area between the pad site on the right and the common property line to gas station. So that's why the building is where it is, and given uh that we're looking to have a drive-through for that pad site, we eliminated the driveway. Coming out the Diamond Avenue and replaced it with the right-in, right-out driveway on Greenwood Avenue. So that's how the the site plan evolved, evolved with some conversations with the D O T in terms of how access could be provided, given these two locations of pass site. Uh so just for context, that new driveway at the Greenwood Avenue, we reference that as site driveway C in our traffic study. So. Great. Now, as you look at these driveways coming in, driveway A, which is one of Grassy Plain. And driveway C, which is the one, the new one coming off of Greenwood Avenue. It provides curved access on either side, so you're, the the driveway will be curved, which means that when you come in. You're being directed to a particular location, you don't have the ability to kind of go wherever you would like, as we talked about in existing additions. So what that does is it provides structured access into the site. And it directs you to an intersection where appropriate stop control is used on the northern approach. And you're allowed to go through as you're coming from Grassy Plain, going over towards the uh the market, let's see the market. Uh but you are staying within those lanes, and you're being brought to a traffic-controlled intersection. Similarly, as you come up from Greenwood Avenue, it's the same situation, it's curved on the other side, and you're being directed to either the intersection up at the top of the page. Uh where it intersects with the driveway uh A driveway, or you can make a right into the main parking field. And either go to the pad site on the right or to the existing shopping center. So as part of the plan, there's stop bars, there's stop signs, there's yield signs, there's pedestrian crossing signs, it's, it becomes a much more controlled. Site in terms of pedestrian and vehi- vehicular access. Okay, so now, the western pad, the one along Grassy Plain, is approximately twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh as on the northern side, that's where the parking would be and where people would approach. Uh bypass the park and go around the building and then go to the drive-through window, which is located on the southern facade of the building. So the side closer to the gas station is where the drive-up window would be, so queuing could occur from the drive-up window to the left going around the building. In terms of, and in terms of driveway, I'm sorry, pad site on the east, uh Mark, could you actually zoom in on the. The one on the west first, actually, just so we can kind of talk about that in a little bit more detail. That might be easier to see. So you can come in from uh the, you know, from the intersection of the two-site driveways. And you can go and park uh in front of the building or go around for the drive-through and leave, and we also have a trash receptacle that's proposed. Uh within an enclosure at the bottom right-hand corner of the back of the site, and that will be backing up against the uh the the uh gas station property. So in terms of pedestrian access, you know, here you have a few different ways you can get to the site. You can either come in off of Grassy Plain, on the new sidewalk that's proposed. Uh you can then cross through the shared, the striped area for the handicap parking and come into the building. Uh or you can continue and go to the existing buildings using that driveway and the crosswalk. Or you could come off of Greenwood Avenue as pedestrian, come up the right-hand side of the driveway. Uh where we're proposing a sidewalk, which brings you all the way up to that main intersection, and you can either go left to the pad site or. Uh continue up the page to the existing store, so vehicular access is controlled, the vehicular and pedestrian access is also controlled. So Mark, if you could please pan over to the right. To the eastern pad site, this also includes a twenty-two hundred square foot, twenty-two, twenty-five square foot building. Um with the uh parking field, with the front of the building facing the main parking field, and with the drive-through. Uh window located on the back or the right-hand side of the of the building. So queuing would happen along the bottom and come up to the drive-through window, the order board would likely be on the bottom right. Uh and there's also a bypass lane in case you decide that you want to leave, and you don't, you won't be stuck within the drive-through queue if uh if you. Decide you don't longer want to be there, because it will be a bypass. There's a third level of pedestrian access here that's also proposed. Um it's a sidewalk that starts down on Diamond Avenue, connects the sidewalk, comes across those, across the front of the. those, across the front of the pad site and then continues going all the way up to the market. That connection doesn't exist now. So we're providing three different ways for pedestrians to get in and out of the site. With regard to parking, the, the center is currently currently meets the town of Bethel's parking requirements for when you add up all of the individual uses, which tend to change over time, but it's actually overparked in terms of industry standards for shopping centers. When we design shopping centers, we look at the ratio of the parking to the building. And we typically target between four and four point eight spaces per thousand square feet of building. The idea that being that the inherent nature of a shopping center is that some uses are busy at one time and other uses are busy at another time. So you don't necessarily need to sum total of all the parking requirements. We use this industry standard average. So like I said, usually the industry standard is, you know, between four and four point eight, depending on different factors. We are proposing four point four spaces per thousand in proposed conditions, but in existing additions, it's actually quite high compared to that standard. It's six point seven two spaces per thousand in existing conditions. So what we're doing is in order to be able to apply the industry standards, we are looking to employ the reduction that is possible under section six two D two in the ordinance, which talks about shared type parking reductions and permanent parking reductions. So I just wanted to kind of point out the, that we are looking for that reduction, given the typical ratios provided for shopping centers. And keep in mind, those are for your, your more of your peak times of year as opposed to your non-peak times of year. That's ratios that I was just talking about. Now, there are also improvements in the rear of the site that we're looking to make, but I'll do that in the context of the landscape in that we're proposing. So the, the project with the introduction of the islands and parking lot islands and different things that we're proposing ends up reducing a previous area on the site by about six thousand square feet. So we will have six thousand square feet more green space in proposed conditions than in existing conditions, which provides opportunities for additional landscaping of the property. So first, we kind of, we looked and targeted, Mark, if you could just focus in on Greenwood Avenue. Have to zoom in all the way. Just, yeah, that's good. Thank you. So we moved the, the parking lot back by about five or six feet from the existing curb line to give more room for landscaping in that area. So we've provided along the frontage, provide a streetscape, a repetition of native street trees, honey locusts. And then in between them, we're looking at different pollinator plants with shrubs and groupings between the trees, which include things like native brasses, purple cone flower, purple sage, tick seed, dwarf hollies. So it'll be a perennial mix between, a perennial bed between the street trees that we're proposing and then around that would be long. So the green space around that will be long. Then in terms of the interior, we continued with the use of honey locusts for the two islands immediately behind the streetscape. Yeah, those two, the two darker green. You can see it subtly that the darker green of the honey locusts. So the darker green trees that we're proposing are honey locust trees, shade trees. And then as you, if you pan over a little bit, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, we also do have evergreen screening around the dumpster for the pad site on the right, right there, you know, because we're wanting to make sure we screen the view of that from the public way, but we also have to set back with some green space too. So we can do a nice job of actually putting in some screening so you won't notice that that is there. Now, when you're coming in off of Greenwood Avenue, we have the shade trees and then there's also the lighter green trees, which are native red buds and those are a little more decorative, have more seasonal interest. They have a nice flower in the spring, very vibrant pink flower. And actually, a landscape architect that designed this recommended to my house. It is pretty beautiful in the spring, the, the flower that it has. So when you come in, there, there'll be kind of an LA of those trees and those are a little bit more decorative, a different leaf for those trees there. Okay, and Mark, if you could go to the back, please? So if you look at the image on the right, the, the existing pavement actually goes from like that corner, the upper right hand corner of the property that shuts into the site. Yeah, that one. And the existing pavement line basically follows that line here. We are moving that back a bit. Adding some pavement in the back, mostly to allow for one, the parking, but also two, the parking and also providing for truck maneuvers for the back of the site, because that's where the loading obviously occurs for all the uses. So in widening that out, we're able to still accommodate the loading area in the open space in between. And then also provide parking along the perimeter. So there, there are some good size deciduous plants there, trees there now. And what we're proposing are, is to supplement that, you know, really focusing on, we walk the site and look to see where it would make the most sense to put additional screening. So we are using Norway spruce along the residential properties in the back right corner. And then on the left hand side, also using some Norway spruce where there's an existing hole where you can actually look, hole in the landscape where you can actually look back through and see the bank property. But really focusing on the residential area and the idea is to put on the plan a palette of trees that we can go out once the site is under construction and really identify where the best placement would be because you move a tree a few feet one way or the other, it makes a big difference in the way that it actually provides grading. So this is more of a palette that we can use and we can go out there and really figure where the best spot are for the trees. Then in the upper right hand corner, back behind the market loading area, the dumpsters are currently located in that back corner of the site closest to some of our residential neighbors. So we've moved them to the location shown in the little notch in the building, those dumpsters right there. So we're moving those. And then we're providing screening along the back proper line for, which will be red cedar. And that will run some screening for that residence and it kind of comes along and comes back down to the the corner of the market building. So, I mean, that's really a summary of kind of the next phase of the upgrades to the shopping center. You know, phase one was when the market came in, making sure the market stayed filled and then upgrading the facades a few years ago to give it a more modern and fresher look. And, you know, phase two of it, of the improvements to the shopping center include bringing in the pad sites that the tenants are asking for. And then also, you know, providing the site channelization, pedestrian access and additional green space to the site. So that's an overview of the improvements. What did I forget, Mark? Well, there's existing fence there now. That's true, man. Yeah, yeah. Oh, sure. There's one other little piece of the actually, Mark, if you could just show the parking lot opposite the western pad site. There you go. Right. So I didn't talk about this little corner of the property. We, that area is currently parking. It's going to remain parking, but the current loading for the adjacent store, the Chinese restaurant is actually off of the property. So we are accommodating for that access in the site, but right there.
That really covers our overview for tonight. I hope we didn't overstay our welcome. I'd have to do a trust thing and if the chair would like, we can come back next time with more technical information on the, on the traffic and access layers.
Yeah, right. Steph, do you have anything? I'm sorry?
There's public here that I'm sure. Ask some questions, make some comments.
Okay, we're ready to public comment. If you want comment, come up here and state your name and address and speak to the commissioner.
My name is Jefferson Collier, one twenty-one Chestnut Road. I have a general question about the statement you guys made. So you can't
Talk to us and then they'll answer.
You can't get tenants until the approvals are made. Is that correct?
That's what I heard, yes.
That's right. Okay. And my other question was fast food is not allowed in the area? That's what I heard also.
That's what I heard.
Is that true?
I, I believe that's true.
I'm sorry.
I believe that maybe you can clarify that.
I'm sorry, I was.
Fast food restriction, a new construction of fast food is.
In this particular area of town, that's correct.
Is not allowed.
Correct.
What's the criteria for what's fast?
It's determined at the time an application is made.
So it's not a blanket rejection of a McDonald's versus a Starbucks necessarily? What's why for?
It depends on what is done on the premises. If there's it, it's, it's, it's very No, it, it, we, we have pretty much established criteria. McDonald's would be a no. Okay, that type of fast food, I have to plead ignorance. I'm not a customer of Starbucks. So I do not know how Starbucks conducts their business. So, so I'm not capable of answering that question at this time.
Another question I have is well, first a statement, I have sort of an environmental objection to drive through. Like, let's get out of our car, walk in and get our fast food. I understand it's a trend, right? People don't like to get out of the cars. They want to drive through and get their Starbucks or McDonald's or whatever, but my concern is that though by approving this, we're saying, yeah, we approve of fast, we approve of drive throughs, right? We think this is okay. So here's two new drive throughs in town. I think it's a, I think it's a bad trend. I think it's, I think, I think it's a fad. That's because I'm sixty-eight. I wonder about the talk about pedestrian access and walkability of the site. If you drive down, there's nobody walking. It's all, no one's walking down Greenwood near that shopping center. No one's walking down Grassy Plain. People are in their cars, which maybe answers the question of why a drive through, because if people aren't walking, they're in cars anyway. So what's my point? I guess my point is that to sort of continue to emphasize, well, yeah, let's never get out of our cars and let's just drive everywhere. Let's get food in plastic containers and from out the window of our car on my street, which seems to happen all the time. I think is a, is, is a bad, a bad thing to encourage. And I, it's probably out of the purview of your, of this board, but it's just something that I would like to make you aware of. I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, next.
Thank you. It's, my name is Jan DeBacher.
I'm sorry.
Jan DeBacher.
Okay.
You already know me. I'm at Seven Pleasant Street, so a couple blocks away from, from the hub. It's kind of funny that this gentleman said, well, no one walks on there, but I walk on it with my family. It's, it's actually on my regular route. If I walk from my house to downtown, I'm going to come down Grassy Plain and, and onto Greenwood, following that perimeter. So my concern is very much with pedestrian access here. Right? Because, you know, if you've ever been, if you've ever seen, you know, like the Dunkin' Donuts at the street at about seven o'clock in the morning, there's cars going in and out, in and out. Several per minute at the busiest times, right? So I have to walk down Grassy Plain Street, crossing the entrance to the, to the parking lot. And we're going around, navigating, you know, navigating the gas station with my kids, crossing the other entrance. And we're going to have a lot more car traffic going in and out. So we really need to make this really need to pay a lot more attention to how this is going to be good for pedestrians. I'm pleased that it is a sidewalk going up from, on the, that would be the east side of the property going up for the one, up to the one pad, up to where, where La Placita is. That wasn't there before. We really need to work harder, a little bit harder on getting a pedestrian sidewalk on with entrance A into the parking lot. That's onto Grassy Plain, getting the pedestrian access on the north side of that. So you can go in, so I can come down Grassy Plain Street and take the sidewalk that, that lands me right in front, that lands me onto the, the walkway in front of all the shops. Right? I go past the Asian, the Asian kitchen, past Grassy Plain, then pass La Placita, turn right, go back down and I'm back onto Greenwood, right? And when you think about it, that's actually going to be you know, it's better for pedestrians, right? Because otherwise, it could be an improvement because otherwise I'm walking on the sidewalk along Greenwood Avenue. It's not a terribly pleasant walk. There's not any shade. Right? I'd much rather be walking in shaded, shaded area in front of stores. Hey, maybe you get a little bit more more foot traffic. So, so this is an aspect that needs to be worked on some more. I, I think we've it's, you know, we've gone, we've put in some pedestrian improvements. It, I wouldn't say it's pedestrian friendly yet. It's not as presented, it's not a pleasant place to walk. More could be done. On the one pad, we have pedestrian access where you could, where as it's presented, you walk down the sidewalk on the east side and you can get right into that store. For the other pad, there's no way of getting in there unless I'm crossing lane of traffic. And, and like I said, you know, like there's a car like every, every minute on, like at peak times of the Dunkin' Donuts. Like they're, yeah, they're all like caffeine deprived too and they're not walking very far. And it's, and it's funny, but it's actually true. Like they're not paying particular attention when you're coming out of the drive through. Again, it's so, this is more of a traffic capacity than, you know, than, than you would normally think. So, so if you can if you have the opportunity, sharpen the pencil basically and see what we can do to make it a more pleasant and a better pedestrian, truly pedestrian friendly development that I think would be, would make this application a lot.
Yeah, listening. Next.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, good evening. My name is Joe Walpel. I live at one ten Wall Hill Road. First thing I'd like to say, this is the first time I've attended a meeting like this and it's very informative. I really like the process, the process.
We need more public.
Yeah.
Public care.
I'd also like to commend you guys, the way you laid out the parking lot. It's taking chaos, it's going to norm from chaos, because that parking lot is chaos. And I'm a culprit. So, and then I, I guess my understanding is that in the future, there'll be whatever businesses are going to apply for that. And at some point, there will be a hearing involved in that. So that's the one I'm always most interested in. But yeah, I just wanted to commend you guys for the great work and commission, appreciate everything. So that's the one I'm always most interested in, but I, yeah, I just wanted to commend you guys for the great work and commission, appreciate everything.
Hi, I'm Dana McNoney, twenty Wolf. Um, I was, I came in here completely against this. Um, so I already have an attitude, but the attitude has gone away a little bit, because I do like. The proposal as far as the buildings, I think that's, that area is kind of like, it needs a little screwing up, and I like that. What I don't like is the drive-throughs. Um, to me, mom and pop stores are not going to be drive-throughs, they're going to be the Starbucks, and if you don't know Starbucks, I'll tell you. Uh, my son works for Starbucks, and they are, they have forty-five second drive-through times. That is considered fast food as far as I'm concerned, Chipotle, drive-through times, fast food. All the others little, that aren't McDonald's, they're considered fast food, because you literally get your food within minutes. Um, that to me is. I've been totally against that, um, I would love it if. The buildings were there, great, no drive-throughs, but let's make it a, another restaurant, like, you need another restaurant, but another restaurant, or maybe. Booties, or something that will bring people in to go shop, instead of having. Cause I live at Wolf Pits, I have the choice of coming to Bethel, or I can go to Danbury, it's the same distance. And I'll go to Danbury, because we don't have a lot in Bethel. Um, not for like clothes and and and, you know, I mean, Carol Lucy's is awesome, but. That's kind of what I would like to see there, somewhere that we could, instead of going to. You know, the Walmart area, go to downtown Bethel. And don't ask me what kind of stores that would be, but I am absolutely against these drive-throughs, and it's just gonna. Take the. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Allison Lynch, I live at fourteen Elgin Ave, so you saw my backyard that backs up to your brick wall. Um, I do have a couple of comments that I think, um, will be great, and you're addressing in the application. With the new grocery store that came in, we saw a big increase in the number of rodents in the area. Um, just, there's just more food, because there was finally something in the building, whereas previously, it was a liquor store, which you're not gonna have. And there is a particular smell from a grocery store, from the trash back there, so that is great, that you're moving that, you can address that. I have concerns if you have a food product drive-through on that residential side. And especially, um, what you'll do for fencing, i- if it's one that goes into late at night, because there are. Two, three houses along that side, and so if that drive-through is behind. The lights going into rooms and bedrooms and things with children and and stuff like that, granted, it's two or three houses, but they're there. Um, so I would have concerns there, and that's great that the garbage for that is towards the front, and maybe not towards those properties, but that, um, definitely. Was a concern, especially as the grocery store went in. Another concern that we have, where, I mean, it's just my yard, backs up completely to the wall, but the existing building. And it is older, right, you noted, um, the age that it was built, and so when the grocery store went in and improvements and things were made. There's a big chimney that goes up the back, and I know that there were bats and there were, um, bird issues. But the solution seemingly is to put a big tarp over it with big cinches and it's not to let anything in. It looks kind of yucky, and so if there's opportunity to improve those types of things on the existing building. Yeah, you might just have that residential neighborhood behind looking at it. But it looks like it was just done to make sure that the birds and the bats don't get in. I also wonder, there are existing cracks, buildings crack, it's a brick building. Um, if there's ever been, and I know I've lived there for eighteen years, and I've never been approached from the owners to look at. Their wall from my side, and there's cracks and things that go up. Luckily, we removed all of the ivy and stuff growing along our section, and some neighbors have also done the same, because ivy does destroy buildings. And so I just also would like to see, there's been any, any engineering looking at the existing building, because. Once you do these improvements on the front end, if there's something that has to get done to this building, there is no way that you can't do that. Basically, in my backyard, and so are there things that you need to look at at that existing building right now? As you do make these changes, I love the fact that you're gonna, um, address the tree issues, there are a lot of. Storms over the years, that trees have dropped, and neighbors have had to call, and they've addressed those. How wonderful to remove those and replace with new, that is just un- unbelievable. And then the last thing to the commission, I know that there's been a lot of traffic studies that we paid for as a town, that we just had a. Um, mobility and traffic study that really addressed this area. And so it's great that the traffic will be addressed at a, a later meeting. Moving these entrances does affect that traffic study that we just got presented to, to the town. So, again, um, some of it makes sense with the existing streets, and we're dealing with state roads and state lights. And you have two that you have to deal with, but as a pedestrian, that does run and walk that way every single day. I do see the issues with the traffic up and down, which the applicant can't control. But they're feeding into the traffic, and so, like the previous resident said, coming and going from Dunkin' Donuts up the street. The speeding in and speeding out, again, if we have increased traffic, because we're attracting drive-through businesses, you're going to have people going. Um, and and doing that cycle, so also love the idea of extending, um, the sidewalk. But in all reality, the sidewalk ends just at their property, you go in front of the dentist, right, and it's done. There's nothing else, there's no other sidewalk, you can get there from here, but to the, our point to as a town, to be able to really extend that. Access to that property, there's still work to be done, and there's not infrastructure there at the moment, so. They can do what they can with their frontage, but it literally ends. Last point, um, when we're talking about, um, pedestrians and children, this year, the buses do not stop at the weird triangle. At Diamond and Greenwood, but for the past ten years, kids' buses have pulled into that triangle. Stop there, kind of spun around right in front of their driveway, like they block access actually to the shopping center. So, as we look at buses and how those change and things through the years, and how that intersection changes, this helps that bus flow traffic. Um, because again, you wouldn't be dropping kids right off in front of the, the shopping center access, but. To the point, you don't have crosswalks, you don't have a crosswalk across Diamond, back over to the other side of Greenwood. The next crosswalk you have is up at the corner of the gas station. People try all the time to go right across to the Sycamore, I mean, that is the worst way to do it, so right there. Yeah, you're dealing with these reconfigured things, some good things, but there are concerns, and as, you know, next year, the. School system could decide to change the buses and put them back on the weird, luckily this year, they're on Elgin, they all pick up on Elgin, but. Previously, they've been at the weird triangle, so those would be the first comments, but, um, again, it looks like a, a. Much better layout than expected, instead of just popping things down there, so I commend the applicant for, for those things, and again. Um, I'm a, a butter, the hundred feet, I got the postcard, um, lived there and have seen it for years, so. You know, take those comments for what they're worth, thank you.
Did anyone else in this room who'd like to come forward? David, how about online? Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
I I'm not seeing any hands raised, uh, online at this time, Madam Chair, and I'll just give a quick public service announcement, just in case. Anyone else is attending a planning and zoning commission meeting for their first time tonight. Um, to offer public comment on Zoom, you will bring your cursor to the toolbar. At the bottom of the Zoom app, and there should be an icon called Reactions. And if you click on that, uh, Reactions icon, or your name in the Participants tab, you can reach. Uh, a button that says Raise Hand, uh, raising your hand establishes a queue for us to receive. Public comments in an orderly fashion, so I do wish if you do want to offer public comment, please raise your hand to indicate such. And after all that, I'm still not seeing anyone.
Like answers, some of the comments that you've heard here tonight? I may comment, tell the comments that you heard here tonight.
Now I have to read my hand already.
Sometimes that can be a problem, I know. This is, this here is going to be extended to our, during its, uh, meeting as well, so.
Want to do it as a group?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
I could just briefly. Andrew Albrecht, uh, Regency Center, um, I could just briefly comment.
So what was your name, sir?
Andrew Albrecht.
Yeah.
Just briefly, uh, address some of your concerns, uh, rodents there. Um, yeah, when, I, when, when it was vacant, or a liquor store, no problem, that's great. We've been working with, with the market, um, they are, as a part of their lease, still required to have exterminating services. Um, and then as a property owner, just with that center, we also have a, uh, we also have. Uh, you know, or name or whatever, um, we have, uh, like contracts for pest control. You telling me that there's a real problem means that I need to go back and talk to people about maybe just. Update, up, you know, upping the frequency, or baiting, or checking like that, but we're happy to. Take care of that, because it is a problem that a lot of our centers would, because there's a lot of food.
With dumpsters, and it's great that you're to move them further away.
Yeah, so that'll, that would help as well, um, as far as the building is concerned, um. If, if, if you were, uh, open to it, I'd be happy to stop by, or the property manager stop by sometime and get into your back door, see what you're looking at. Um, because as we know, there's about a four-foot walkway. You know, in between the chain link fence separates the fence that separates the property in the back of the building. Doesn't give you a really good perspective to stand back and see things sometimes, but if you know any issues, I'd be happy to.
You're more than welcome to come hang out my yard.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The, the tarp.
Yes, you know about the tarp.
I was, sadly, I have to admit it's a little bit involvement in the tarp. However, it wasn't bats and other flying runs, it was water infiltration through the. Deteriorated mortar, and they were having flooding issues in the basement. The, the short-term solution was to wrap it and cover it. However, the tenant is obligated, and we'll give him a healthy reminder, that they do have to address that issue, because that's part of their lease. Um, so we can get on that, but, uh, yeah.
Well, then I guess you've finished. Now, what about, I'm sorry. Oh, I was gonna ask first about, uh, the commissioner on a sidewalk. Would we like, I think, I would be good if it all went at the same time. Yes.
Do you want a sidewalk?
Yes.
When do the clocks change?
Too soon.
Okay, so we still have.
Still October.
Not much, but we had some.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, weeknight or weekend?
Well, nights are difficult for the cooking. Yeah, so, um, Mr. Shanley. Uh, Linda.
I mean, if we do it on a weeknight, I would say five o'clock.
Would that be?
So at least get an hour and a half of light.
So what, 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 what would you think? Paul, Linda, would that be, uh, all right for you? Or should the weekend be, be maybe a better day?
Morning and the weekend.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Morning. A weekend morning.
Weekend morning?
How about you, Paul?
Okay.
Uh, weeknights work better for me, but I'll be flexible.
Okay. Alright, so then why do we say a weekend morning?
Weekend morning?
Yeah.
Um, nine thirty on a Saturday?
I prefer ten if that's possible.
No.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, no way, not, no, not for her.
I'm like, yeah.
I could go, okay, I could go earlier, I could do it earlier.
What day were you looking at?
What day, Saturday morning?
Yeah. Saturday, the twenty-first.
October twenty-first.
Uh, just to know, I'm unavailable for the next two Saturdays, I have to work, but, um, don't change it on my accord.
Alright, October twenty-first at nine thirty?
Sounds good.
AM.
And we will meet by the.
Go with our wine bottles.
Instead of us driving around lock, aimlessly in the parking lot. Um, we'll meet at the sign at the front of the complex. Okay, we'll prep our cars where the, um, sign is saying the various tenants. Alright.
Alright.
Uh, members of the public can always attend. Um, the way we conduct sidewalks says, you're more than welcome to attend, but you cannot ask questions, it's a very involved technical matter. That's how it works.
Is a motion needed to schedule this, Madam Chair?
Excuse me one second, is that, can you representative make it? Nine thirty?
Is it nine thirty or ten?
Alright, so can we have a motion to do a sidewalk on October twenty-first at nine thirty at the Hub Shopping Center?
I move that we have a sidewalk on Saturday, October twenty-first at nine thirty in the morning, at the Hub Shopping Center.
Paul?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Senator, motion passes. By a majority, very good. Okay, now, does, does the commission have any questions before we, before we, uh?
Yes.
Yes, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Shanley.
Okay, um, my, the current spaces, I think you said, was a hundred and ninety current spaces? Is that it? Um, how many are, how many are proposed? I know what you said, per square foot.
Yeah, there were one hundred and ninety-four existing parking spaces.
Right.
And there are.
Hundred fifty-four.
One fifty-four sounds right, I just wanted to make sure, oh no, one fifty-six.
Excellent. My, I'm gonna, I, I don't know if you guys labeled the two proposed buildings. Uh, in my mind, I was calling it Building B, because it's next to the existing B entrance. But that, that building there on the, uh, eastern portion, is there any thought to moving that? Left and turning it maybe ninety degrees counterclockwise, so it faces Greenwood Avenue? Or is that not available because of the, uh, that same issue you were talking about earlier?
The deed restriction. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. Sorry, uh, the lease restriction, uh, does require that we not go beyond the eastern property line that's closest. To La Placita. So it's a rejection of that, of the long line, that's where we can put the building.
Got it. So it really can only go in that little kickout area there?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, um, those are my only questions. Um, one comment is, I would, uh, like to see some sort of like solid fencing and screening around that, uh, Building B. Um, that little kickout, I, I, we, we didn't really get into it, um, so I'm, I don't know if it's already in your, uh, proposal. Um, and then, we, again, we didn't. It is, okay, and then, um. Stormwater runoff, I know you guys are reducing, um, impervious, but I assume there would be some sort of, um, stormwater plan? With, uh, because right now, if you go by there, any storm, where the other proposed building, which in my mind, I'm calling A. Uh, is always flooded, that parking lot's completely underwater all the time, that section there. Uh, so I assume you guys have a plan to deal with, uh, stormwater?
We do, we do, we submitted a stormwater advisory report, and our utilities plan shows the stormwater improvements, including a detention system.
That, that's it for my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Bob Leggard, do you have any questions?
I, I have, I have a question about the parking also, uh. You're looking for us to waive our own parking regulations down to. One fifty-six from one ninety-four? Or is the one ninety-four excessive of what we would be required without these two buildings?
Let me make sure I have my numbers straight here. It's a waiver of forty parking spaces. So yes, it'd be one ninety-six versus the one fifty-six that we're proposing.
Okay, and the other thing is, uh, I, I was down there. The other day, just to look at where you had pinned the buildings, et cetera, et cetera. And just, this is, this is just a housekeeping thing, I think you have to look at those containers. On the one side of the parking lot where the, one of the buildings is gonna go. As to, you know, they, they take up parking spaces, number one, but they're, they're not well maintained either.
You referred to the donation then, sir?
I'm not beating up on the charities, but, you know, they, if, if they're gonna be there, they need to be maintained.
Noted, we can, we can speak with that, uh, with that vendor and have him keep that police stuff better. Uh, those, those containers are a, are a month-to-month lease, uh, agreement anyway, and. Worst case scenario, if they simply had to be removed or relocated, that would be, that would be acceptable.
We did discuss that in our planning stages.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Excellent.
I mean, we're making the rest of the place look nice, so, uh, that, that would.
Absolutely, yeah.
They do that on other locations as well.
Yeah.
People just leave things.
Okay, before I move on from us on Zoom, can I ask one other thing? If that's alright with you guys, um, I know we were talking about drive-throughs, but you have no tenants. Already in the pipeline, um, signed up, so if you got. Uh, approval to build something and a tenant came in and didn't require or didn't want a drive-through, you're not gonna force it on them, right? That's not gonna be a prerequisite of your lease that they have to have a drive-through?
No, it would, it would simply be. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cool, thank you.
Linda? No questions at this time?
Hi, yes, I have a couple of questions, um, the right turn in and out along Greenwood Avenue. We all know what happens with right turn on late exits, um, specifically, I'm talking Carol Lizzie. What kind, wi- wi- will there be like directional? Whatever, bumpers to keep people making the left turn? I just didn't say that.
It, it, it will be channelized, meaning there will be an island, a triangular island. Separating the right turn in and the right turn out, so that if you were looking to make the left turn out. You would have to drive over the island, there'd be a physical obstruction.
Oh.
Would be a multiple curve.
Good idea.
Okay, great.
But, but so you understand what, what Rob just mentioned at the end, it would be a mountable curve. Per the direction of the fire department so that they could get a truck in and out. It cannot be a standard vertical curve edge, it would have to be sloped. But it would not be friend, car friendly to be driving over in your Honda Accord or your, whatever.
How did you know that my Honda never? Really, okay, um, I have another question, maybe slash concern. You were talking about a pedestrian access from Greenwood. That would cut in front of, I guess. Um, building, whatever, the second, the, the one on that side, um. Will there be sidewalk there? How will people do that? Because if you're dealing with people walking through. But you're dealing with in and out. I'm also looking at, for instance, the Dunkin' Donuts where nobody really pays attention. So how do you propose to keep pedestrians safe as they're doing that?
So we are putting in a pedestrian crosswalk, there will be yield pedestrian signage. Um, so that is what we're proposing, i- i- there's not much else. You can do, it's just to make sure that the landscaping is such that. There's not any sign impedances where you can actually, where the car can see the person, person can see the car. Um, but, you know, making sure we sign it, uh, making sure we. Have the right striping, have a visible crosswalk and make it obvious that this is an area where pedestrians could be.
Okay, my only concern with that is that having driven and walked along Greenwood Avenue and tried across Greenwood Avenue. Sometimes striped areas don't really mean a whole lot.
Um, this would be a much more narrow, we're talking about crossing about twelve feet as I.
Right.
So it's a more narrow manageable. Area as opposed to crossing a major, that's gonna be a whole different story.
I guess I just had another question, but I think one of the public people brought it up. Um, we're not talking fast food. But both have drive-throughs, by its nature, aren't drive-through places. Places where you get food. So are we talking about distinction of definition?
That's the kind of thing that you'll drill down on when we come in with an actual tenant, because. My sense from what I've seen in town and conversations with Beth is that. You wanna know exactly what's going on in a particular facility because. Uh, you know, the particular concerns about, you know, trash, throwing containers, uh. Excessive traffic, all those things will be wary of and work around, uh, to beat your satisfaction.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Wallace, true.
So, um, I live about two blocks away, so I'm very familiar with the area, I'm one of the people that's walking out there, uh, you know, pretty often also. Um, there's some more comments than anything else, I, I have a few of them, um, just one, this is kind of the back to a tenant housekeeping. Issue is that if you're ready to be reducing parking spaces, um, shopping cart control. Uh, would be good, there, um, there's, it's, there's usually fifteen spots that are filled with shopping carts. Um, a lot of hours of the day, so if somehow in your design for the, you know, the property be. Be a little better, easier for people to get their carts where they belong, I know I sound like the cranky. Mirror, but.
It's a tough ongoing problem that we have at all of our tenants, grocery stores. Or retailers that offer shopping cart service. That we find them, we find them three blocks away. We, we find shopping carts in our properties that are from another store that's, that's six blocks away. So it, it really is kind of a universal issue, um, being proactive as a landlord. You know, really going in when you're on site and saying, hey, tenant, grocery store, you got carts out there, come on, come on, get on these carts. Um, is about the only.
Yeah.
Way you can do it, we don't, we don't have onsite management. So there's somebody there looking and going in all the time, so it is, it is a difficult battle, but we recognize it and. Yeah, we can speak with them.
I, I understand where you're coming from, um, I will say, I never see them around in the community, it's always confined to the, to the property there.
Right, good.
You're cutting down on the number of, of spots that are available.
Yeah.
That, that could help your, your situation if there's a, a plan for that.
Well, and, and as a, as maybe a possible partial solution. I don't, I don't believe right now, uh, Placita has a car corral out there. But i- if, if it made sense, maybe you guys could, you know, put in this process, approve one of the stalls to be taken up. And designated as a placenta, uh, uh, car corral, uh, and that would, that might help.
Yeah, at least take up one instead of fifteen. Yeah, exactly, um. The. There, there's a lot that I like about the right in and right out on the, uh, you know, the, the C side there.
Right.
Um, but then that forces any exiting traffic, if they wanna go downtown, to go out on DeGrassy Plain and turn left. Across two lanes of traffic. Um, and anytime, any accidents that I've seen there have been the result of people doing exactly that, and part of it's the confusion of return lanes. On the, on the road there.
Yes.
Um, I think moving it north is good because the other part is people are coming around the turn from Greenwood on DeGrassy Plain and they're right there.
Yeah.
So, um, maybe that's, that's the solution in itself, but it's something to be, you know. Just, you know, some, something to keep in mind as you're, as you're.
I think that with, with all of the traffic engineers in one room, the issue against consultants in one room, I think you'll get a good overall. From, you know, there will be disagreements.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and on data and things of that nature, but I, that's why we really want, I really wanted to see that reserved. For its own, um, section of the hearing.
And, uh, yeah, I, that, that, that's it, I, I couldn't, you know, micromanage your plan, but that's, that's. Uh, so, for now. That's it.
Well, they, they have everything I had written down, so you'll have to hear more from me next week. Do you have, you have something else you wanted to add?
Uh, I can't remember.
Save it for two weeks, write it down. Okay, Beth, did you have anything you wanna add?
Um, no, just a reminder that we, you know, I think it's good, you get out there, look at the site and come back.
Yeah.
Fresh and start, um, more of a technical discussion.
Okay, so.
Uh, any upgrades to sightlights being done? Is that all included in that?
Yes, we are, because of the reconfiguration of the center, we are proposing, 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 uh, new sight lighting. Uh, we will do lighting plan in our package, yeah.
Gotcha, uh, and along Greenwood Avenue, was there, uh, thought to put like decorative? Kind of going with the theme of what we already have further up on Greenwood Avenue? Kind of like, you can actually see them right off front of the municipal center on your way out tonight. Um, they're like a decorative black pole.
No, okay, you can take a look, that, we hadn't contemplated that, it was new, just new LED lighting. So we didn't, you know, contain to the site, we were trying to, you know, limit our, our light shed.
I, I was, I was thinking about it and I was. Gonna wait until that we're doing more for traffic, cause I don't know if that's gonna interfere with the, you know, the roadway there. But, uh, I just wanted to bring it up now so you guys can chew on it for the next couple of weeks, I mean, uh. Improving that sidewalk and, and making that little, uh, space there, um, I don't know, it just might look really nice at night. Um, just, uh, again, spruce up the place, uh, for the first time in what, seventy years? Again, I'm just, I, I'm just shooting it out there and we, we can talk about it more in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
When we have the traffic people and get more into the traffic, cause I have some questions about that too, but I'll wait.
Okay, and as, as it starts getting darker at night, um, it is a good point, Paul, I think it's more of, um, of. How you, how you see it when you go, when you go driving down in that particular area of town?
It's tough to know now, cause it's wide open, but once you have trees and they've grown in for a few years and you. You'll lose that light shed from the parking lot lights. Uh, it might just be nice to have some nice decorative black lights there, or the black poles, you know, those, the, um, just up the sidewalk.
Yeah. Uh, absolutely, positively.
So, yeah, just, just my closing thought.
Yes.
Thank you, Paul.
So light in that area of town.
Okay.
And our building lighting has dramatically changed too.
Yeah, it has, it's really dark.
Oh, okay.
Does the town have, uh, right?
Show it to us more.
On the building itself, under canopy, you know, signage, that's what I'm saying, that's already a place.
Sounds great, so I guess this meeting will be table until, oh, not table, it'll be continued. On the twenty, is it the twenty-fourth of October?
I think it is.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Uh, you know, there may have been a miscommunication, I don't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I emailed him, I might have mailed it to him.
Okay, that would be a problem if it's not your fault.
Yeah.
So my, my suggestion is, is that you open this hearing.
Okay.
Eighteenth Stony Hill Road, and immediately continue it.
We have the, uh, covered.
Could you pass this down to?
Okay, so what we're going to do is our next public hearing, is how do you say this?
Gaetrick.
That's it, Corporation, Eighteenth Stony Hill Road, zoning amendment four point four E height. And would you leave a legal notice case?
Sure, uh, legal notice to appear September twenty ninth and October sixth, twenty twenty-three. Public notice, the Bethel P and Z Commission will hold a public hearing on a text amendment to the Town of Bethel zoning regulations. October tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM on the conference room D of Municipal Center One, School Street, Bethel CT. Increase height requirements in the Route Six Zone from three stories to four stories, provided that the property is solely used for a hotel, motel or motor hotel. Section four point four E two. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethelct.gov. Parking for the hearing is located. At Stevens.
Okay, and so then we'll continue this to the twenty-fourth of October.
That's the twenty-fourth, okay.
Right, so. Item is new business, Neil R. Marquette's text amendment. Four point three K point five, allowance for vintage plastic car, plastic car restoration. They would like to have a, a, a public hearing, so.
That's regards to, um, creating industrial park zone, something similar to what is going on over in the Murraybrook section of Denver. And what also is happening within the network itself.
I'm sorry.
With classic cars and things of that nature.
I, I made a mistake here, please forgive me, everyone, I, I went right past the business meeting. So.
Okay.
So can I just, uh, take a second here? Uh, this is, I go to every meeting, I would like to set seat Rob for Ken Stevens. And seat Linda for Ken Parsons. And we do have the, uh, minutes of nine twenty-six, twenty-three, has anyone had a chance to look at those?
Have, I'd like to make motion to approve the minutes of September twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Rob.
Seconded.
Is that as written, Mr. Wallace?
As written.
As written. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstention, motion passes. We have any invoices?
Yes.
We do.
News times seven hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents.
Right, and would like to make a motion? Pay our bills? Seven hundred and twenty.
Seven hundred and twenty dollars and twenty cents.
And twenty cents. Pay the news times.
Second.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion passes. Okay, now, I'm starting, now, now we probably go to the new business with Mr. Marcus and, and it's.
Okay, uh, new business, so, uh, we'd like to, uh, propose that we, um, hold a public hearing on, uh, November fourteenth. For, uh, uh, the proposed text amendment four point three point eight point five.
So second, Bob? Okay, uh, all in favor? Opposed? Abstention, motion passes. Okay, we don't have a work session, do we have any commission comments? How about, uh, public input? Would anyone in the public like to share anything with us? Or ask us anything?
Can I ask a question?
You most certainly may. Hello, public, we would love to hear from you.
I'm Nancy Sudik, and that's spelled S U D I K, no C in it.
Okay.
That's okay, first time I went out with my husband, I put a C in it too. Um, my question is this, oh, I'm not wearing my plaque for you today, sorry.
I'm not wearing the red.
Your, your address, ma'am?
Oh, sorry, Two Ridge Dale Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome, um, my question is this, do I understand correctly that the four-story building, uh, change zone? Being proposed in Stony Hill, is it only for Stony Hill, number one? And number two, is it only for hotels, motels and, what'd you say, microtels?
Yes, I'll answer the question, they, uh, the answer to the question is yes.
Thank you, can I like? Okay. Okay, why?
Because um, if, if you look online and look at the application.
I will.
There's a proposal in there showing a rendering. Of a hotel up there that we'd like to do. Um, and uh, uh, an addition in the back.
Oh, I see, okay.
And in order for them to get four stories, they have to ask for a text.
They have to, I, I understand, okay. So you can't do it with, like, the nursing home, if they wanted to put an addition on their back, or that, it's not a nursing home, the. They could, nor if you want four stories, you're, you're not far from there. She couldn't do it.
No. Bob, I'm sorry, did you say something?
Just go look on the, on the line, and if you have a question, please.
Thank you very much. That, that was all I needed to know.
Bob, did you have a comment?
No, I, I just said we really shouldn't be discussing that.
That's why I'm answering the question for you guys.
Beth was answering it, not us, we're all done. What we did.
Oh, cool.
Okay, okay, um, I don't hear any, uh, that, that, is that all for public input? Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Can I just say a few, uh, I just have one thing I wanted to discuss with the commission tonight. Um, that is, in, in regards to um, the Bethel Housing Authority, as you know, I'm the chairman of the Bethel Housing Authority. Is looking at the old police station.
Oh, yeah.
Or possibilities of adding some senior housing there similar to what we have now in Reynolds Ridge. I mean, not individual, but maybe we wanna see the potential. Um, the town is, has agreed to let us do that. Um, there is a, a caveat to that is that we do have an affordable housing trust fund. And what I'm looking for, because if this does come to pass. It will be part of the contribution of the town to any funding that we receive from the state of Connecticut. Uh, by donating land and by doing this, but we need to get good elevations in regards to. That property, because there's a lot of controversy in town surrounding, is it in the flood zone? Oh, it floods out, or this, that, and everything else. So, my, my, uh, my request to the commission. Um, it is that if you would allow us the use of up to fifteen thousand dollars. To do the elevations involved with this particular property, but using the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Um, in order to accomplish that, it would be highly appreciated.
You need a motion?
That would be wonderful.
Oh, what is the, what's the money being used for exactly?
Money, the money is being, the uh Bethel Housing Authority.
Yeah.
In working with the town of Bethel is. Surveying portions of the old police station property for elevation purposes. The reason we're doing the elevations on the property is that.
To make sure it's not.
Need to know the elevations for building purposes, and if it's feasible to use that property to create more senior affordable housing like Reynolds Ridge. The town benefits from this overall by having those elevations done. So then the town will know if something can be built there, number one. And number two, if something can't be built there, well, then it will be limiting what the uses of the property can, what the property can use.
So basically, you just need a survey.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little bit more involved. Cause it's not gonna be the whole property. The whole property itself is over twenty acres, I believe, or.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's gonna be very specific as to what areas are gonna be done for elevation purposes.
And what's the amount?
I said up to fifteen thousand dollars.
So I would like to move that we approve up to fifteen thousand dollars. For the Bethel Housing Authority to survey the old police building property for elevation purposes.
Second.
Thank you, Bob.
Could I ask that you amend the motion?
Please.
Um, and, and the amendment would be to um, uh. Uh, uh, to um, seek the. Uh, what you wanna do is mention, the, the reason you're doing this is to. Uh, investigate the possibility of creating more senior affordable housing.
Okay, so can I make that? Okay, um, so I'd like to make an amendment to, to that, to investigate the possibility of using that space for senior housing.
Affordable, affordable senior housing.
Thank you, Bob. Bob, do you agree to that amendment? Okay, cool. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion?
Hey, I have one more comment here.
Sure.
Uh, for the record, I did the education concerning the Fair Housing Act.
That was my next question.
Hour and a half class I took there, so.
Anybody else watch the video?
I didn't say.
I, I looked, I looked at the slides.
Thank you.
I, I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm Rob.
Yes.
And we know your excuse, Linda.
Oh, but it was fun.
Had a chance to do it, yeah.
That's okay, but clea- please know I'd like it done by the uh November first.
Okay.
Okay, that way I can get everybody's name in. As complete for this year, before you get new board.
I don't know if you've heard me, I voted yes for that um, the money allocation.
Thank you, Paul. I have one other item to bring up, just to bring to your attention. And that is, um, recently the town has um, had uh several complaints concerning Airbnbs.
Hmm.
Airbnbs are not, if you, if you look at our zoning regulations, it's very specific in the regulations and. In the first sections stating that if it is not an allowed use, if it is not defined. As an allowed use, it is not allowed. So therefore, there's at least one, I think, I, well, I issued one cease and desist. There's another one that will be going out very shortly. Um, the cease and desist that I issued is being appealed. By the property owner to the zoning board of appeals as a first step. Um, it's probably gonna be a very illegal, very involved. A, a, appeal process, but um, I believe that uh you as a commission and we as a department have always believed. That um, a, a short-term stay anywhere is, is considered hospitality. It's concerned um, being a hotel use, a motel use, a bed and breakfast use, things of that nature, which there are regulations in. On board for those, and that's, is what should be followed. I just wanted you to make notice of that, and if you had any questions who disagree with our interpretation.
No, oh, that, would I be correct, that several years ago. Um, there was location, um. I wanna, Worcester Street and Library Place.
About that.
Intersection, there was like, there was a tailor there for a while and. And somebody opened up. A, a bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
And.
Yes.
Much to everybody's surprise, and it was shut down.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember that.
And that's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, could we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes.